We're gonna go ahead and call the work session to order.
Amen.
We're gonna get, um, Nate Lewis to open us up in prayer.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the rain. We ask you, Lord, to give us the mindset to handle your business the way that it needs to be handled or take care of our citizens, take care of our employees, and mainly take care of our city. Lord, we ask you to protect us as we leave here tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the, um, work session agenda. Um, do we have any yet tonight?
No, they're gonna be next meeting, but can I give a shout out?
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
We just want to shout out on behalf of council, congratulations to the eleven U of Park of Recreation. You triple A new kids went to Baton Rouge, Louisiana. We recognize them. It's the last meeting before they win. Um, they went down there, played nine games, right? They were six and three, getting finished runner-up in the World Series. Um, and they took it to the last game. They had to beat the champion team by two times. Ended up beating them once, but they lost four to three in the final game. So, congrats to them. It was a lot of hard work. Up to a hundred and ten degrees on that turf field out there. So, uh, they were playing two or three games a day. And, um, just a great job. Congrats to them. We'll get them up here to recognize them in person later.
I know, yeah. Congratulations to those guys. I tell you, I've never been so proud to live in Silicon. I said our kids' agics have been represented all over, um, the United States this season. I mean, we've had kids everywhere, soccer team, baseball, what else? I mean, we.
Gymnastics.
Yeah, gymnastics. We've just been, we've just been, um, we've been tearing it up out here. Alright, so number one, um, discussion that is necessary by engineering and environmental and forestry services company, Michael Rice regarding the fiscal year twenty-five transportation plan. Uh, Michael? And it says this must be adopted no later than August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. So, Michael, this says twenty-five. It says it has to be, um, must be adopted no later than August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. So, is it twenty-five or twenty-four?
So, the plan's updated annually in July, August, but this, what they make you update the plan prior to the next fiscal year. So, you know, so the city's laying out what their plans are for transportation from, I guess, September or whatever. I don't know when the city's fiscal year is, but September through the following year.
But this is next, this is next August is the deadline, or this August is the deadline?
The deadline to have this ready for the following fiscal year is August.
Twenty-twenty-four.
August of twenty-four, you have to adopt what you're gonna do for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, so, okay. Alright.
So, the transportation plan is for what you're gonna be doing in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
So, it's twenty-twenty-four?
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-four.
So, that, yeah, is that an error right here on, on?
It's just the way we, it's just the way we had, um, and Lee called it. Just wanted to make sure we knew where the deadline was. Cause this was saying we had, um, till next year, the deadline's next year. But you're saying the deadline is August of this year.
Correct.
Is this the final draft?
So, I, I would kind of, that's what I wanted to talk to you guys about tonight, is this is kind of a running list of, of projects that, one, the city has accomplished, um, since adopting the transportation plan after the rebuild of M I, which was required. Um, you can kind of see that, but it's also kind of lays the groundwork for what the city plans to do going ahead. And it was basically the projects that I was aware of, or somebody at the city, um, Reed, or Mayor's Office, or somebody else that, that made me aware of. And that's, that's what's on this plan. So, it's up for discussion. If the city has something that, you know, y'all are aware of, that's not on here, we, we can definitely add it. And it's not, you're not saying that, you know, we're gonna do all these in the next year. You're just saying, hey, we, we, we're willing to start looking at these things over the next fiscal year.
As our priorities now is a commitment.
Sir?
As our priorities now is a commitment.
Correct. I don't do. So, this is, yeah, the template here is the same thing that's been presented in years past?
Well, any of the stuff that, well, any of the stuff that was on that, um, that is at the mayor's office? For the bond applies to this?
It could. It could be on the list and be a capital project.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Um, I don't even have the list. Alex, do you have a copy of that list, you know?
Um, sorry, Alex. Last council.
So, will we just give you, um, will we just, just give you the list by this deadline? Cause we make it, um, use some of that stuff on that list if we're not able to do it once we, um, go to the bond market? Some of that stuff on that list? So, Alex, that's what we're probably, we can just take a look at that list and see if anything on that list applies to this and we can.
I can, Michael.
Okay.
Anything that's transportation-related that we can get credit for. Of course, having talked about it.
Yeah, and this is kind of, you know, it's not really, uh, like, kind of what, I'm just saying, it's not really priority, but these are the, I guess, kind of ten things on here that we've identified. You know, if, if, if the city wants them to kind of be in priority order, we can do that, but just those are the, yeah.
I got a question, Michael. Since it says pertaining to transportation, would it, would streets be something we could, um, talk about? What are you looking at?
Eight, six, and seven of a miss.
And I was gonna ask about the concrete streets. That's what I was, um, thinking about in mind, the concrete streets, not really the asphalt.
So, the, the concrete streets, and I don't know, Reed can maybe help me out on this. I think that the concrete street repairs project was completed in May of last year.
Did we do, did we do all the concrete streets?
I would give them a cap, remember?
Yeah, cause that's what I was saying. I know we had a number, I know we had a cap, and I know we didn't do all of them. So, not only the concrete streets, what about the sidewalks? Is, is that something that can be, uh, a part of this? Because, I mean, that's technically part of transportation.
Well, there are two projects on here that, that kind of relate to sidewalks. One is the, the commitment the city has made to the TAP, that fly twenty-twenty-three project. So, that has some sidewalk funding. And then, um, you know, I, I know we have talked about it in years past, but the, the need for sidewalks, and I've talked to Mike Whitstone, and he, the, the need for sidewalks along James Payton Boulevard, uh, to kind of get the, the residential housing side of James Payton connected to where they're, you know, where a lot of people are going, which is the commercial to eighty side.
Yeah, but I was thinking more like in some of these, you know, residential areas, cause I mean, we have a lot of people that walk now and, you know, we.
And a lot of people are in, uh, wheelchairs now.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, more like the sidewalks we already got. Maybe we could do some. Yeah, do like some repairs or some updates to some of those, like, not really, I mean, I know we need the new ones, but we need to kind of do something with these we already have to, that's what I, that's what I was thinking on the lines of that makes sense.
Right, yeah. There, if there are high pedestrian areas that, that you guys know need to be evaluated to our ADA compliance, that, hey, we wanna start with this area for, for fiscal year twenty-five evaluated.
Four streets, four streets are major. There's so many, um, motorized wheelchairs and stuff to go up and down. Four street.
Maybe we can, maybe we can get some sort of, um, list of, you know, Reed, maybe some sort of list of sidewalks that maybe need some repairs or, yeah, yeah, maybe.
Wong, I know Wong, uh, um, Norton needs some attention also, South Norton.
It's, it's a lot of, I know there is, um, a few in my district too, because now we get to where people do a lot of walking and exercising.
I forget about that Striking down Norton also.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I'm sorry, this took me a minute to get, to get there. I know we always wanna add new stuff, but it would be nice to try to, kind of update some of the stuff we already got.
So, what, what's the next step? What does Mike need to do, or what do we need to do regarding this transportation plan?
So, add miscellaneous sidewalk evaluation or repairs or how?
Yeah, current sidewalks, current high-traffic areas. And what I see on this one to ten list is pretty much prioritized.
Reed, would we add, uh, Striking Norton in with Mike, or is that something we can do in-house, you think?
South Norton on the list, it's high on the list.
Okay.
With traffic, with traffic.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, and it's, just covered up.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we, we know that, you know, like, like you say, the high-traffic areas in some of these residential areas as far as the sidewalks, cause a lot of times, you know, we, we do tech grants and this and that, it'd be, you know, downtown, the business area, stuff like that, but we need to pay attention to these sidewalks in other places.
And there's kind of, I won't say catch-all, but it says, under the, there's ongoing maintenance and planning, uh, Silicon Pedestrian Bicycling Transportation Plan. So, that's kind of new corridors. And I guess, you know, you're constantly evaluating the needs of existing pedestrian facilities to, you know, age four, top of age five.
That's all I have.
Yeah, that's good.
So, make those corrections and then send back.
I think that would, that would be good.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Alright, so we'll move on, um, to number two, discussion that is necessary by Madison Likes regarding special events license for Fall Festival twenty-two-four, October nineteenth, twenty-two-four. How are you guys doing today? Good. So, tell us, um, a little bit about what you're trying to do.
I'm gonna host a fall festival bit in October, the little old park, for like food vendors and arena vendors. This new one last year, so I'm trying to do it as often as I can every year as possible. I like doing events and stuff, and I do have a small business.
Okay. I know now, Alex, I don't know if you've already talked to somebody in the, um, okay, well, she's already got the, um, that new checklist we got? Okay.
Alex.
Have any questions?
Just make sure your checklist is done, you can go.
Thank you so much. You all ready on number three?
Sure.
Alright, discussion that's necessary by Calvin Miller, Executive Director, Holiday County, E D eight, to consider a tax abatement pursuant to section forty-nine B dash one for Amia Incorporated. You doing alright, um, tonight, Mr. Miller?
Well, doing well. I was fortunate enough to have an umbrella in the car, so, a little bit of serendipity there. Uh, this is actually not a new abatement, this is an amended abatement. In February of twenty-twenty-three, the county granted an abatement to Amia for a twenty-six million dollar project that they're gonna do to manufacture perlite. And during the year, they have decided they're gonna add another furnace and a couple of, uh, uh, storage units out there, distribution units, and the total cost of it will be, uh, over thirty-three million now. Uh, if, uh, if the abatement, well, if the amount goes over by more than ten percent, they have to have an amended abatement. And so, uh, the county has granted the amended abatement as it's located out in the county, but it's within the police jurisdiction of the city of Silicon. And so, the city of Silicon has to agree to it. So, that's all we're asking is that by resolution, would you agree to the county?
But there's no money from the city of Silicon, it's just a, a agreement with the county that it's okay for the county.
Right. There, uh, there is no money from the city of Silicon, in that it grants property tax abatements, and because it's within the police jurisdiction of Silicon, you don't, um, you wouldn't collect any property taxes. And also, you don't enforce your sales and use tax out there, so you're not missing any of it.
Good. Thanks, Mr. Kevin.
We did check with Brian Ash, and he knows what's happening.
Yeah, I seen, um, and Brian said that everything, this was, um, everything was in order.
Thank you, Kevin.
Alright, number five, discussion that is necessary by city council to enter into phase-two contract for architectural and engineering services with William Black's thought architects for the Silicon Recreation and Aquatic Center. X, that's the word? I know, I'm working on it. I'm sorry, let's go back to number four. Discussion that is necessary by city council regarding the underwriter for potential general obligation issue. And Alex, um, you wanna explain this, cause this is the stuff that we've already voted on, but there was some wording in it that we had to change, so we just have to.
In the work session, when you guys, the council agrees to take something out of a resolution, when you go to vote on it, it needs to be amended, although you've never signed it.
I got a, I got a question, um, I do have a question. So, so are we technically revoting on it tonight? Or are we just voting to amend the vote that has already been passed?
Yeah, you have to vote, you have to re-vote to amend the resolution, because we took out for the underwriter, we took out the thirty million dollars.
Okay, so it's the same thing we voted on?
Except for thirty.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Phil?
Any, no worries.
So, we'll go to number five, and number five is the same thing, right?
Yes, ma'am, we removed the one point seven million, um, from Ryan Coleman.
So, it's the same thing we've already voted on, but because of the wording, we have to re-vote on it?
I should have a answer.
Okay. Any questions on these two?
I don't.
Okay. Number six, discussion that is necessary by fire chief Nate Osgead to enter into an agreement with Site Med North America LLC for firefighter medical clearance program from August fifth, twenty-twenty-two through August fifth, twenty-twenty-four, totaling ten thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, automatically renews annually. Twenty-one people at one hundred dollars each phase-one laboratory, blood work, twenty-one people at two hundred ninety-five dollars each phase-two medical and fitness component, five people at three ninety-five.
So, th- this is, me falling into the same trap with the contract stuff that we dealt with last week. So, this, this has actually been in place for a couple of years now, it's been budgeted for, it's, it's our NFPA, National Protection Association require physicals, uh, that, that stay on top of our guys' health. Um, but we just had to formally vote on it.
So, so let me ask you, since it says, I know this contract is gonna be, uh, August of this year, and it says it's automatically renews annually.
Yes, un, un, unless either party decides to cancel it sixty days in advance.
Okay, and this is something I'm asking y'all.
We're past the sixty days, so it's automatically renewed.
Okay, so is this something that we're gonna allow to just automatically renew every year? Or are we gonna come back every year for this to be decided on?
Well, the other contracts that we've been dealing with, apparently the way it's been presented, all contracts and agreements have to come before the council.
Yes.
So, um, I would think this wouldn't be any different unless.
Well, it depends on how the contracts work, and it says it renews automatically, and we don't have an issue with the contract.
But what if the contract changes in the middle of that?
Then, then, then it would require coming back.
So, this has been the same. So, let me, let me get this, um, let me get this straight. So, this money has already been budgeted, and we already know what people are getting this, and it's been the same ever since the contract has been in place.
Correct.
But what you're saying, if one person comes and they get a new, um, certification, then.
No, 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 I mean, between, between us, the city, and the, the medical provider, to, to, to perform the physicals, if there were any changes, if they increased their price or anything like that, then I would, I, you know, obviously would have to come back before y'all at that point.
What about, what if the number of people go up? So, it says five people at three ninety-five. What if you get two more people that get this? Would the contract have to be come back, come back?
I'm, I'm sure it would have to.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm.
Any element changes.
Okay.
Ideally, though, anytime we sign an automatically-renewing contract, we should cancel it immediately, so nobody forgets, and so that there's room for negotiation before automatic renewal. Otherwise, we only have ten months before it automatically renews.
So, what are, what are you proposing that we do?
We should always send her a protective notice of cancellation on any automatically-renewing agreement, so it does not automatically renew without negotiation.
Okay, so what?
So, when that time comes, we should get their good, uh, against this.
And it gives you leverage for renegotiation at a lower rate.
But. Does it make sense on this one? No, does it make?
Yeah, I, I have a question on that one, Mr. Perryman, because this company has started not performing them for smaller departments, because they don't get as much money for their buck. And we're technically grandfathered at this point. If we were to cancel this agreement, this company may not be willing to come back.
Hearing a protective notice of cancellation does not cancel the agreement to the agreement end, so you're not losing anything. I would never sign an agreement that automatically renewed that I did not have a way to consider the automatic renewal. That's my personal opinion.
And they've got some, um, questions?
Um, I looked at that site, and I went to the website, and most of it is EMS, or most of ours. Did I go to the wrong site? I mean, I didn't see, I didn't see much bio on there. I saw a lot of EMS for blood work and stuff like that.
It is a lot of blood work. These are, these are physicals performed on our personnel. The, the, there's a, an entire NFPA standards, NFPA fifteen-hundred, if you care to go look at it, it, that has to do with firefighter occupational safety and health. And it talks about these annual, these, these annual physicals in there that we are supposed to be performing on our personnel.
Okay, so it's just not for the ones that have their EMS.
No, this is for, for every, every.
I will explain to me the five, um, the five, they put three ninety-five for the medical and the fitness. Are the, are the other ones not getting medical and fitness or?
Yes, so, so that had to do with the contract, which was that, the original contract was for twenty-six, our total number of personnel. But this past year, when we performed it, we had vacancies, and so that was the difference.
Okay, so i- it is not, we're, we're still not going to EMS, but?
No, no, has nothing to do with that at all.
You got any questions to ask?
I don't.
Um, okay, so Alex, Lee said we need to send the company, uh.
A protective notice of cancellation. It doesn't do anything other than, um, put on record that you better than notice, doesn't mean you can't withdraw it. It just gets it on record, so it doesn't automatically renew.
And then we may still just renew with the same terms?
And you may withdraw the notice.
I think, um, and I think what you're saying, hopefully, I don't know, maybe we all agree that we should send that to everyone, that we have an auto-renew policy in our.
To preserve options, cause somebody's gonna forget, and you're gonna wind it up as automatic renewal.
I, I completely agree with y'all. I can only send the ones we know about.
Okay, but as, as we, um, as they come up, do you guys agree with that?
Absolutely.
They, you got any questions for us?
No, that's it on that one.
Okay.
The, the next item on the work session has to do with the used truck.
Okay.
Now.
You want me to read it, or we gonna go into it? I'll read it. Number seven, discussion that is necessary by you, fire chief Nate Osgead, to purchase one two-thousand-eight, um, sub, two-part truck from Williams Appearance totaling a cost not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, if ready.
Yeah, so, so we need a table to vote on it, because I did not receive all of the paperwork that I needed from Williams to, to be ready to, to vote on it tonight. But for the sake of discussion, and I just wanna make sure that, that I clarified and that we're all on the same page here, the, the two-fifty, and I, I thought I had stated this, the two-fifty is the all-inclusive number to have this truck response ready.
Okay.
So, so there, there are things that we're gonna have to do to this truck that are not line itemed yet. Like, you know, again, it's a used truck, it's coming from an apartment in Georgia, so it's got some bruises and bumps, and scrapes, and paint chips, so they're gonna have to correct that stuff. Um, some of the, the, the emergency lighting is gonna have to be replaced or, or repaired, you know, lenses that are cracked or, you know, old and fogged up. Um, all of the, the compartment shelving and tool mounts in the cabs, and the compartments, and the hose beds, all of our graphics, you know, ca, any, anything in the cab that's gonna need to be reconfigured to get the brackets that fit our SCBA's, you know, our breathing apparatus. All, all of that stuff is gonna have to be done to get the truck response ready. And that, that two-fifty number was the, the maximum not to exceed number that it's gonna take to get us to that point.
And just from listening to you, so I'm, I'm, it sounds like you've already did some sort of research, because you did come up with the number. You came up with the number not to exceed.
Yes.
So, so let me ask you.
And that was from discussion with the fire truck company, that he said, this is, this is what I think it's gonna take.
And we, and we all know the two-fifty number, because I think we were all under the impression that the truck costs it two-fifty, but it doesn't. So, how much is the truck?
Again, I have, I, I think it's one sixty-eight or one sixty-nine, I, I think, but he hasn't said, again, that was part of documentation that I didn't get in time for tonight, so.
So, how soon can you get that number back? Because I think we're all in agree is that we do wanna buy the truck, and I think that's the most important part. We can't plan for all the rest of that stuff unless we have an actual truck. So, how soon can you get?
Well, I, I think we should plan for all of it at the same time, because they have the truck in their possession right now. It doesn't make sense for us to get the truck, get it here when we can't use it, and then take it back to them to do work on it.
But we don't know the exact total, so you're saying not to exceed, so without an itemized list, we can't.
So, so.
We can't agree to it, but.
So, what, what I'm, I'm, I'm gonna work to try to get all of that for y'all by next meeting.
So, let me ask you this. So, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the truck is first come, first served. Somebody else has a chance to come in and buy the truck, right?
Yes.
And we decided that we want the truck, so we wanna secure the truck.
Yes.
So, that's why I was asking, how much did the truck cost, so we can go ahead and buy the, make, plan and buy the truck, so the truck is ours. And then you can just come back with the list and tell us, hey, it's gonna cost this much to get this to make this truck Silicon's truck.
Understood, and, and I'm, I'm gonna work, try to get all that, but I, based on the conversations I've had, you know, I don't think that we're at risk of losing the truck right now. I mean.
Anything is possible.
Anything's possible, but, but hopefully by next meeting, we can have a lot more information for y'all, because it just, it didn't all come together in time for tonight.
So, can you get the information in a week, and then, um, just email it over to us, so that we'll already have it? And then we can coordinate with Alex, so that, um, we can make sure we're prepared to, to buy this and do these things to the truck? Does that make sense?
It, it does make sense, and I can't, I can't guarantee any, because this is gonna become a truck committee thing, so the same truck committee that was working on the new truck's gonna get back together to figure out these types of things.
But you will have it by the next meeting?
I, I'm gonna do my best. It's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of hands we have to touch.
Is there anything we need to do on our part to, to help you, so that we can, uh, make sure we have all this information?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I'll just, let, let, let me do my part on it, and, and I was hoping to have some documentation tonight to vote on it, but it, like I said.
Cause I know we've been talking about buying a truck, and you know, we, we had said we're gonna buy two trucks, and this truck is one of our two trucks, and we don't wanna lose our truck.
We should go, we should go ahead and buy the truck.
But he's saying we can't buy the truck, so that's why he needs the information.
Yeah, I, I, the, the, the contract did not come through in time for tonight.
But if you get, as soon as you get the contract, he'll let us know.
Yes, absolutely.
Do you guys have any more questions on this?
No, I was, I was kinda under pressure with Mr. Perryman to go on and buy the truck or not, but we don't have a contract that gets.
Yeah, that, that was, that was the problem with that.
But we all on the same page to buy the truck? Action.
Yep.
So, as soon as you get that contract, Nate, just, um, just shoot us an email, let us know.
Oh.
Thank you. Okay, number eight, update by the, um, update that is necessary by Mrs. Abatement Officer Josh Coleman on the status of properties within the city. Hey, Josh, how are you tonight?
Doing fine, council, mayor. So, I'm coming to y'all tonight about, uh, some things that I've discovered. I've, as you know, I've been reviewing a lot of, uh, my predecessors' files, and, um, there was a topic that came up specifically about the properties that I'm working on in North Maine that, uh, are on schedule to demo. So, um, basically, the first thing that I need to clarify on, um, which I believe has been confused, uh, was that back in two thousand twenty-two, when this process started, um, eight-eleven, eight-oh-nine, and eight-oh-five were the properties that were brought to the council for consideration. And so, after that occurred, time went by with, uh, you know, budgetary, uh, money was not available to, to move forward with it, from my understanding. And so, then you fast forward into February twenty-second of twenty-twenty-four, when, uh, Mr. Ben, uh, Mr. Benjamin Deason came and had public comment timing. In that agenda, I found that eight-oh-seven, eight-oh-five, eight-oh-nine, and eight-eleven were, were in the list of items that y'all voted on. So, you went from three houses to four, and the confusion, I believe, occurred where three were, three went through the process according to, um, city council, and then the fourth one was not considered because he had lived in the property at that time. So, then he moved out of the property in between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-four, and then it was lumped in in the twenty-twenty-four meeting. And so, I honestly believe that one property has not been addressed, um, for me to move forward on all four at one time. That's what I found with, uh, some dates. And I had a title search done where, um, that was the second topic to discuss with you, is that the, the estate of Mr. Kendrick, uh, who passed away and, um, left a will and testament to give the property to Mr. Deason, who y'all spoke with about the property, that estate is still open. And that estate, um, is, uh, the executor over the estate has not been Deason, it's actually Ricky Deason, his father. And during the title search, we also discovered that, um, Abigail. And during the title search, we also discovered that, um, Abigail Williamson, who is Ben's sister, has been paying taxes on the property, and because those names popped up on the search, I wanted to do my due diligence and make sure that I didn't get in hot water for doing any, uh, process without them having any say in the property. So I'm, uh, so I contacted the clerk's office and asked about starting a public notice process and including them. Um, Mr. Livingston did provide me with, um, the search that he conducted, and he can speak on, on those things, but, um, that's where I'm at with the property, and wanted to make sure that y'all were in the loop as soon as I've discovered that.
So, and I think Wynn can answer this better, maybe, I don't know, but would it be in the life estate, um, then with him passing away, the remainder mans now, he was the remainder, or the brother and sister were remainder mans, they're the one that got the inheritance of the homes and the property.
From my.
Ben said no.
The, it, it's, it's beneficial to do what he's doing on all of them, just to cover all the bases, covered one that it never, as he stated, that's never been declared to be of other use since, and it's not gonna cause any more problems to have the exponents out there. But in reality, the estates, most of the estates in Talladega County stay open, the person represented doesn't own it. The person that, that, uh, that's left property in the will, which is Benjamin R., owns it. And then those two that, that paid it, that was a time back in the, I think it was twenty-three, maybe? Twenty-two, that was a tax sale, and that he redeemed it from a tax sale, but it's, it's not gonna hurt to, to add these extra people in the, in the other houses.
So let me ask this, so to keep us from having this issue in the future, what, what did you do that we didn't do in the first place to get the information that you got?
So, uh, Mr. Livingston conducted a titled abstract, and I had a, uh, titled search done, which was considered historical. So it went thirty-plus years back, um, I had, uh, sought out some advice from a fellow code enforcement officer, who told me that, uh, sometimes the opinion that comes back from an attorney, um, may not be as in-depth. And because the city is taking on this responsibility, uh, just to, to make sure that I don't have any issues in my responsibility of doing due diligence, they suggested I, uh, reach out and do that, so, so I contracted, or I did not contract, sorry. Uh, I hired someone to, uh, to do one property search, and that's what the results were. And not to muddy up the water, but there actually is another piece of, uh, the puzzle, where the city, um, back in the seventies, got some type of easement with some type of alleyway. And that's gonna be something that the city will have to figure out, if we have rights to the land, when it comes down to that easement was signed to create an alleyway back in the seventies in the middle of that property. But it wasn't very clear that anything was ever actually done with it, but that's something that the city will.
I, I think that alley was like that, that something that I, I found vacation that I believe is what you're talking about.
Okay.
Where, where Kendrick had to play that, so it came, he does, because he owned on his side.
Okay.
But my abstract, now, hate to disagree with one point, saying my abstract is sixty, and nothing in there is a problem with, with anybody paying the taxes. I can go pay, Nate, I'm gonna pay your taxes, but that doesn't mean on your behalf.
Mr. Livingston, the only problem we got is that we were set to take asbestos off, then we were set to condemn, or we were setting to our house down, and now we can't, because the proper study or proper looking into or whatever you wanna look at it, wasn't done. That's the only problem we've really got here tonight, sir, and I am very upset, because my people in District Three have been looking forward to that, cause that is an eyesore, when you come down main, coming into the city. Period, paragraph.
Three of the four were fine, it's the one property that was left out.
So only one of the property pad, uh, is, is in a state.
Uh, actually, all four of the homes are on one parcel.
That's awesome.
We've heard nine being connected to it, now we have to do another public hearing.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anybody can pay.
And that's what you're, and that's what you're recommending, which, but that's what we have to do anyway, now since.
I, uh, from my position, I am recommending that we invite all of those, uh, to have a chance to speak. And, and.
We, we, we have to.
Just, you know, now that I have their names, I feel like that's the best way to go forward, so then we know we've done everything we're supposed to.
Okay. Well, I think we should accept this recommendation and get the public hands going.
I agree. That's fine. If that's the case, then I'll go ahead and, you know, start working on mailing out what I need to, please.
Any more, anybody got any more questions on this? All right, thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
All right, number ten, discussion that is necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert for contract services between Talladega County and the City of Silicoga for animal shelter services and senior citizen center.
Each year, Talladega County gives the city specified amounts for the animal shelter and the senior center, um, and the senior center is because we have to go pick up people at Sycamore. It's normally, it's never been a problem till now, we invoice them, they pay us, however, now their auditors are requesting a contract. And as you're aware, all contracts must come before the council. Um, we're not paying anything out, they want to enter into a contract with us annually to give us my money designated for each of these areas.
Just so they can explain, I guess, on their books where their, how they're spending this money.
Yes, um, so that's what we'd like to do, we'd like to do the FY twenty-four and the FY twenty-five at the same time.
So are they gonna provide you with the contracts, and we just?
They did provide the contract, um, Wynn did review it, um, they're on your tablets. So we would like to enter into that contract, and re-invoice them, so that they can give us the money.
And this is just something that we've been, um, doing each year?
Yes, except they've never asked for a contract before, normally we just give them an invoice.
Question for you.
Please.
The additional three miles, it's now in the, in the, in the jurisdiction of where the animal shelter will, will take pets, cats and dogs. Was that discussed with the animal shelter, to make sure that it wasn't gonna cost them more than twenty thousand dollars to do that, based on how many animals?
No, we're not picking up any animals, no, sir.
No, but it's allowed people, allowing people within three miles of the city limits to drop off animals at the animal shelter.
No, it's the animals that they're already getting, when you get an animal, you can't identify that the animal's from the county or the city. So they're just trying to help the city offset, because we know what's happening.
Okay. I'm just confused by the three mile thing, but, good.
Any more questions on this? Oh, I didn't, I didn't even, did they specify how they have to spend the money, or did it matter?
No, no restriction. And it's good, twenty thousand dollars is good.
I know it.
Add twenty for the senior's as well.
Alex, are you gonna say anything else about that?
Uh, well, so a while ago, approximately two months ago, the animal shelter came to the city council and asked for duck work to be replaced at the animal shelter, to the tune of nineteen thousand dollars, it was the number one on the capital list. Um, at that time, it was stated that the air conditioner does not need to be replaced. However, since that time and now, it has been reported by the vendor, and we're working on getting two other quotes, that it needs to be replaced. Um, the temperature out there has been over ninety-five degrees, so they're turning the AC unit down, which is causing it to freeze up.
Tell them to quit.
We did contact Sleeping Giant, who went out to try to fix it, and I did speak to them myself today, and they said it is a matter of time before it goes completely out.
Mike, how old's that unit out there, do you remember off the top of your head?
When they're talking about, sir, the office of this property at least thirteen to fifteen years, I would wonder if police could rip off it, see if it's back with it.
Running that all the way down will cause one to freeze, wouldn't you think?
Generally no, there's gonna be an airflow issue or a pre-ontolee issue. You can, you can cut it down, long as the airflow over it just freezes.
So something's up somewhere with it, cause it is freezing up, since they're running it down to whatever they're running it down to?
Yeah, I went out there the other day, it was very bad.
The unit is, or it's just hot?
No, it's, it's, it's not functioning correctly.
I got you.
I don't know the diagnostics of it.
Well, here we go, the, uh, county says if you have twenty thousand dollars, we can use some of that money.
That was gonna be my recommendation.
Oh, good job.
But I was just gonna let you all know, that when it comes, we'll get the three quotes, um, and normally we can just do a requisition for the lowest bidder, as it's not over the threshold. So, we will get twenty thousand, but we'll end up using it.
Mike's got a question.
I gotta say, I was out there the other day, before you have a burger complaint or something. You probably need to address it, just to prove it, if you get the three quotes or whatever.
Yeah, that, that's what I was gonna ask, Alex, how long would it take to get this taken care of?
We're waiting on the department head to get two more quotes, she was asked to do that last week. She provided me one from Sleeping Giant, um, she hasn't heard back from the other two.
So getting the two quotes, turn the requisition in, you'll get to pay your own, I understand.
Because they'll be under the threshold, so we don't need to come back to the council, um, for approval. So as soon as she gets us those quotes, we get to go.
That's what I was gonna say, just follow up to see if we can get the quotes, if they don't have the quotes in by a certain date, I mean, you can't make anybody get you a quote. They don't have it in by a certain date, we're gonna have to move forward anyway.
But Mike, basically, you would, you would declare this, deem this as an emergency, because people are at risk while we're waiting to get this fixed.
It's, 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 it was, it was ever outside, then it was inside.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's tough.
Call, call Stephanie and see when did she request the quotes, and if we still hadn't got them, cause I mean, if you said a week ago, that's seven days, we may just have to go ahead and move forward. So if we don't have them by tomorrow, what do you guys think, let's just go ahead and move with what we got? Cause I mean, if she, if she done it a week ago, that's seven days.
Well, maybe she just need to follow up with the.
Yeah, but that's what I'm.
I just don't think it could wait another two weeks.
As long as she, we, reaches out tomorrow, I mean.
Yeah, well, get her.
Let's give them three quotes.
She can go to their office, they're all, some of the H-bag groups are right down the road from our office.
One was Nick Thompson, one was Colby.
But don't they have to come, but don't they have to come out, though, and do a quote, or they just can't?
They've been out there, they were the ones that cleaned the ducks, right?
No, Sleeping Giant cleaned the ducks.
Or they went out there and looked at it.
Right, but they did go out there and look at it.
So there's big communication, and I mean, they're not even a mile from each other.
Well, let's just follow up tomorrow, and let's see what the information is, but we do wanna go ahead, there'll probably be something in place.
But how can we prove this to the council?
I don't think she said we don't have to.
We don't have to, because it's not above the threshold. So we're just gonna take the twenty rand that Talladega's gonna give us, and we're gonna spend it on air conditioning. That way, we don't need to find the money.
I got an, I got another question.
But this quote is over.
Yes, twenty-nine.
That was for the duck work, too.
Okay.
Should be the second line item.
And the duck work is done?
Yeah, we did the duck work, but what I was gonna say, what do they usually spend that twenty thousand dollars on?
Whatever is needed out of the shelter, whether it's food, whether it's vaccines, it's not specific.
Related question, people make donations to the animal shelter.
Yes.
How do they get access to that money?
They bring the money to us, they're supposed to tell us where the money goes, we put it into Springbrook.
I don't think that's what he's asking.
But they don't have the budget for that, cause that's a donation, once they get it, they should be able to spend it.
And there's a line item in?
As long as it's not restricted.
And it's a separate line item in her budget for that amount, and she can go and request it, and it's just calculated just from that line item, not from her total budget.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so she can just go. Yeah, she does, yeah. And Alex, just, um, she does an email, let us know if you followed up with the three people, or she followed up with the three people, so we can go ahead, and, um, since we're declaring this an emergency, we can go ahead and, um, take action on this as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions on that? All right. So number eleven, discussion that is necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert to refund garbage services due to double billing.
Utility board bills for garbage, and for certain people that are annexed, we bill manually. And we were both billing the same property, so the customer called us, it's a hundred and thirty-two dollars to refund them. Okay, no problem.
I got another question, this, it's still about like air conditioning and stuff like that, do we have some sort of routine maintenance every so often that we do on stuff like this, or we just, when it tears up, we respond?
Since I've been here, when it tears up, we respond, I don't know about previous to me, Mike, can you shed some light on that?
Is there some sort of, um, proactive plan for like routine maintenance for things like this?
Preventive maintenance.
Preventative maintenance, for things like this, because I know this is, we don't wanna keep ending up in a situation like this, till where stuff is tore up, and now we're trying to react to it. So do we do some sort of, every few years, or before the summer comes in, do, do we check stuff like this out?
There was a proposal to the council about two years ago, to take that into account. And we started, Lloyd was still here, you remember him, that was where we released, that we got hired as a laborer. Ben, they had started a list, and they were going around changing the filters and checking the valves and things like that, cleaning the coals. And I guess since Lloyd is no longer here, it went by the wayside.
So what about, well, what about with, like, with you, you, you do things like this for buildings? For the buildings in Silicoga, is this something that you do for the buildings? Like, do you go out every so often to check stuff?
No, we don't do maintenance, we don't do that type of that.
I know, not maintenance, but is there like some sort of checklist, yeah, like an inspection, like a checklist that we have to do?
And who changes the filters?
Yeah, every so often, to make sure that all the city buildings are up to code and where they need to be, is that, is that something that you take care of?
Who does?
But that was a proposal that was put to the councils several years ago, that it never went anywhere. Other things had priority, I guess, I don't know.
Okay, that was my question.
We should make sure somewhere that somebody's changing filters, proactively.
That was.
It might be in need of somebody else.
Ben changes the filters when they notify us, um, he recently did change filters from, I forgot which one of our, um, buildings, but they called us and said, you know, if you come out.
That really needs to be on the schedule.
It's always a monthly check.
And it be.
By each department. Before we do a school, we're on schedule.
We do it quarterly, but yeah, and they should come here, yeah, there needs to be some sort of schedule for stuff like that, maybe we can look into that for air filters, for all the AC units, because air conditions are really, really expensive, and some.
Cause we just played, replaced the, um, park suit.
I'm sorry.
As these air conditions have been replaced, when you say monthly, the type of filter we specified for them, will last more than a month.
Some of them aren't, yeah, cause I know like, with, what I do, we do them quarterly, so I mean, but it needs to be just notified, well, not notified, documented, you know, when they're supposed to be changed, and maybe they go to a certain place, and when they come in.
You were, you were, the name alluded to what causes them to freeze up, cuts them down, dirty filters, dirty coals, slow fans, sluice valves, all that will make something freeze up, if you don't have enough air going up the boil, to keep the boil dispersing the cold air.
I know, but a filter is something, it's, it's so important, but it's so, it's so, it's a small cost, you know what I'm saying? It's a small cost for preventative maintenance that we should be doing, especially when we're spending all this money on, um, on AC units, so.
I don't disagree, I don't.
Alex, let me, let's, let's, um, yeah, let's get a list of all the ones of the city buildings, and then it may need to just flow through your department, to where we order the filters for these, to see how often we need to have them changed, and they just come here, and Ben knows where to put them so often, so that way, instead of, I wish we could just make the department heads responsible, but that way, if we just got one person taking care of it, we know it's being done, if that makes sense.
Can the information flow to Ben, since he's gonna be handling it?
That's what I'm saying, they'll come here. That's what I'm saying. They'll come here. Well, however, well, you'll set it up for it to go. And then they'll just come in the mail. We can just order them.
What did the council then hire and be in somebody part-time or full-time? Because he's over all this, he'll get his help. Just a reminder.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. That's all head on, though.
Number eleven, sorry about that. Kind of almost went down the red line. Number twelve, discussion that is necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding Insight Engineering Services Agreement.
Okay, so. Again, this is a contract slash agreement from years past. So everything was sent. I will try to not stumble my way through this. But in two thousand five, an agreement was signed and a resolution was done to hire Insight Engineering to provide services for the city. The agreement has never come back to any council since that time, except in two thousand nine, when Sam Wright approved this. How the agreement is written is the city funds the bill upfront on behalf of the contractor. Then somehow, the city clerk gets notified, I'm still trying to figure that out, to go back to the contractor and ask for reimbursement. So we're paying for the contractor upfront. I did reach out to our attorney, Brian Cash, because he handles the tax abatements, and how this was originally written was a tax abatement from the documentation that we have. And he had concerns with this contract, the fact that it's never gone back before the council, and that we're using something that was approved by Sam Wright.
Well, I have concerns about it. It sounds like we're loaning money upfront and then hoping that they're gonna, that the individual's gonna pay us back. That's the concern I have. I'm not understanding that.
Because I'm not sure how the city clerk's office gets notified. The one we just recently did was on for the Chapel Street subdivision. The agreement was signed back in December. We paid it, and then we've never sent anything to get our money back.
So there's no record of the money came back to the city?
No, I called Building Services to discuss this last week, and the conversation didn't really go as well as it should have. And I'm not really sure how I'm supposed to, without documentation, go build somebody. So I'm not sure. My question is, if this is a contract, so should all of these two not come before the council before we're spending all this money?
Well, in my opinion, this one should automatically, but also, we can't, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be fronting money. We shouldn't be paying for any services of, we shouldn't be paying for anything for anybody and then hoping that they pay us back. I don't, I don't.
I don't, I don't understand it. But now, and we've never seen this because it was an agreement.
No, this actually, the word contract is on the top of this document, which threw up a red flag for me.
Okay.
And we found all this out because we got an invoice for another property. And we contacted Building Services to find out if they would do the purchase order. A couple of months went by, and we were told there was an agreement, so agreements go through Brian Cash when it comes to taxes and property, so that's who I reached out to. And then we sent him all this documentation, and he said.
Here's one from March first, two thousand six.
Right. So Brian Cash recommended I come before the council to figure out, anytime we do this, do we need to come to the council? He thinks that we're gonna continue to do this contract. It needs to be redone because we're not like Tiffany or one of you said, we're not.
We're not a bank.
Bank. We shouldn't be loaning money.
That's right.
He said what they do in their city is they ask for a check from the person upfront. And then we hold on to it, and then that's how it's paid.
Did you two hear that?
Yeah, we did. I heard her. I'm still confused on this. So this contract shouldn't be in place, right, from two thousand and five?
It should have been worked out.
Okay, so, so can we stop doing this now?
Mike, can we stop doing this? This comes from his report.
Let me say this. Happy Creed is not finished. That's why you haven't gotten it properly. He just resubmitted. The developer submitted it back to the engineer. The engineer found some issues with it. They corrected it. It's been submitted back to the engineer now for him to approve and sign off on the issue. So you can't, if herein lies the issue. If you wanna do an upfront cash payment from them, that's fine. But what's going to happen is all of you sitting up there, when a business wants to come into town, and they got a time limitation on getting a piece of property closed, to finish and get a permit, you're asking to continue this two-week meeting, a two-week meeting, a two-week meeting, and then you're gonna, it's not going to be our fault because it's getting delayed and these people walk away.
Well, explain it to me because I'm still confused, so.
How it works currently?
Yeah, how does this work? Explain?
There's a budget every year. And the planning commission budget, if you go back and look at the budget, there's a line out.
Okay.
Supposedly, we're using that. This is the way it's been done since before I even had this job.
Okay.
The money is used out of the budget with the repayment agreement. And then whenever everything is filed out, they have to repay the agreement now.
How do we know they, how do we secure that they're gonna pay?
Well, you could tell me not the issue of permit, and then I don't know if you can do it either.
But we, but we still lose the money, so.
Yeah, that's irrelevant.
Why, is there another way we can do this? Because I don't think, and this is just me, I can't speak for everybody else, I don't think we should be paying a contractor to pay people and then they pay us back at the end. Because when you hire somebody, all that, that cost should be on them, and then we just pay them what we owe them.
That's your decision. How you know what the cost is gonna be when you have a development as big as like the Hobby Lockes? How, where are you gonna base that figure on? You know, we just built a nine-house subdivision. That's not gonna be very expensive versus a multi-million dollar project. How are you gonna determine what that is?
Mike, forgive the oversimplification, though. When we pay currently, do they send us a bill? Or we just, how do we decide what to pay them in advance?
The engineer, if you look at what Alex is earning, you know, I didn't notice it was gonna be brought up tonight, so I'm sort of like there to help out. But there's a monthly fee or a yearly fee for everything that he does, and he builds just like an architect or anybody else by the hour for what he's done.
Well, can't he just send us a bill and then we hand it over to the people who need to pay it?
No, if you don't know what problems are gonna arise, just like this sudden, they submitted it.
They have an additional bill. They have an additional bill. Or we haven't paid them anything yet.
We haven't paid them anything.
But when the bill comes in with the.
The engineer usually completely finishes their review until the sign off, and then he sends it to you.
But we just can't send that bill to them to pay rather than us pay it.
It's just common practice in other municipalities?
Well, it's been common practice here since before I was here, so I don't know.
So we're basically paying their subcontractors and stuff for them to do.
We're paying our person that's watching out for our interest. With their, that's what, that's what the fee is for, the person that's looking over it to approve it is in the interest of the city to make sure that it meets all of the, the whole end of the settlement.
But if we're paying them, why are they paying us back? I think that's why I'm confused. So why are we paying them and they pay us back if we owe them? That's, that's why I'm confused. Why are they paying us back?
Who's paying them? Who's on third? I'm lost here.
Oh, Alex, just, just tell me, so that way, so we're, we're paying them. They, they send an invoice to say, yeah, explain it.
This invoice right here.
Yes, looking at the invoice.
Building Services.
Yes.
They do the requisition.
Uh-huh.
We issue the purchase order, we pay the bill.
Okay, and then what happens?
That's the question. At such time, somebody needs to tell the city clerk's office to bill the contractor this amount so we can get our money back.
The former city clerk, whenever they submitted the bill and we approved that the work was done, it went to the city clerk, and she paid that, she contacted the owner, because that's the contracting officer for the city. He got the, kind of got the developer to pay the city back.
Okay, so is, am I the only person?
No, you're not, because I'm a little, what, what did Brian Cash say needed to happen?
Brian Cash says we need to relook at this agreement, but we do not need to be paying the bills for this. The person needs to actually pay the bill, whether that's write us a check upfront for an amount, and then we go from there.
And how, and how are we, how are we entering into agreement and we don't know what we're gonna pay in the end? That's confusing as well. So, to what?
Brian, I'm, this is kinda your world, right? Can you make some sense of this or no?
No, I cannot.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Okay, we're gonna have to make, we're gonna have to get some sort of clarification on this. Maybe Brian Cash can enlighten us or school us on this, because from where I'm sitting.
I don't think we'd like the idea of paying money upfront and then hoping that they're gonna return the money.
But also.
The engineer is working for the city, not working for the contractor.
I know, but, but we're, so when we pay him the money, who is he paying? The engineer. So when we pay the engineer, who does the engineer pay when he?
He's paying, that's his fees that he's collecting.
So if they're his fees that he's collecting, why does he have to pay us back? That's what's confusing.
No, it's the, it's the.
It's the developer that's paying us back by the engineer. We're paying the engineer to make sure it's.
Okay, so, yeah, all right.
But why can't we, when we get the invoice from Insight, forward that to the developer and say, pay this?
That's, that's what he's saying. That's what he just said. That's what he said. I think that's what he said.
And the, and the agreement with the developer is that we will forward in the bill when we get it, because we don't know the exact cost, and they're obligated to pay it within X days, or we're not gonna issue a permit.
So you're saying rewrite the agreement?
Well, or amend it and make it simple where we're not involved in the checkbook.
Yes, that's.
Because there's no, there's no reason not to just upon immediate receipt of that, we send it to the developer, say, pay this bill. You gotta pay it before we'll issue a permit.
This makes sense.
Thank you.
Final one.
That's still an agreement, though, just that you understand.
Yeah.
I go down, says we're gonna walk if we can't get a permit by Tuesday.
But they're not entitled to a permit if they don't pay.
If they haven't paid.
Hey, I'm all for getting the fee upfront, but somebody's gotta determine what the fee is. You can't charge the same fee for a nine-month.
Somebody is, somebody is the timing it, because they're sending invoices. Somebody already knows how much it is.
You don't, I'm talking about the upfront payment from the developer.
Okay, so there is an upfront payment?
No, I'm saying, she said that John Cass at other cities has the developer pay the fee upfront, and then you pull off of that fee that he costs.
Drawdown budget.
Is, is there a way to negotiate with Insight, a fee schedule that is close enough that could establish a single fee for everything?
You never know what's going to happen on where you pay the project.
That's exactly what I thought.
We need to create, we need to create a drawdown budget for each project like that.
Or, or just again, the bill arrives, just send the bill. They gotta pay the bill for the permits as it's done.
And we come out of it, we're, we're not, we're not the middleman handling the money. We need to do what we said.
I agree.
Lee, can you repeat that one more time?
When an invoice arrives from Insight.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that makes sense.
In my opinion, when an invoice arrives from Insight, the city forwards it to the developer, saying, this work has been completed, you're obligated to pay before we can issue a permit. Thank you very much. They'll rush and give us, and pay us so they can get the permit.
But they have to pay it anyway. They know that, and especially if they, they're not doing this anywhere else.
They can make their checks payable to Insight Corporation, and the city doesn't touch the money in or out.
Melvin?
So I still wanna know, how do we, what happens if they don't pay?
They don't get a permit.
They don't get a permit.
Got you.
And we're not, we're not paying any money for anybody.
So we need to dispose of this contract.
Or, or just write, just write an amendment to the, to the procedure by which we collect. Could be the same scope of work. We've just got a different way that, rather than paying in advance, we send them an invoice expecting to pay, and the process is they don't get a permit until they pay.
But it's the same thing because they have to pay anyway.
Mike's got a thing to do.
Opposite, it's, it's tied up.
Not opposite.
But you're, you're, the engineer is working for the city. Does everybody understand that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. We're telling the engineer to look over this for the city, but we're telling somebody else to pay the engineer.
But we're not paying the engineer.
What if they don't pay the engineer?
You've got a good point. If they don't pay the engineer and the permit is not issued, then the city falls on its sword and has to pay the invoice, but you would expect that they're developing.
That's fine with me, but you need to pass an order and say that we don't issue a permit. And tell all the engineers, means that you have a subdivision or paid by the developer.
Well, I, I think, I.
They're good.
Yeah, and I think we should do that moving forward, and I think that covers everybody.
I'm gonna give Brian Cash, see if he can help.
But repeat that to Brian Cash, and you'll probably.
Yeah.
I will?
And the, and the city may be ultimately responsible, but it, it doesn't mean that we have to issue a permit.
But then too, the thing is, if the engineer works for us and if we're responsible for paying them, then.
We made five, four, not two things, and we, where we lose money, but not, not loaning anything anymore.
We should.
Mike, page you one more time.
I just want to say, this was put on the agenda. I mean, that's about it. And this is repeated.
It was on the, it's been on the agenda all week, Mike.
With all due respect.
I didn't know what it was.
With all due respect, it's secretaries, the one that told me to place it on the agenda.
Do we?
Well, it, it, all right, hold on, Alex. It doesn't matter. We just glad it's on the agenda and we got it taken care of, so we, we know what we're gonna do now, right?
Problem solved.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, so number thirteen, financial status update provided by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert.
Okay, everybody got a copy of this, right? The financial, okay.
Is it on here or behind the?
No, it's on the paper.
What paper?
The one behind the animal shelter.
So we just got a little one, you got a long one.
Yeah, you don't need the long one. The long one's really good. So after the animal shelter's number one, I didn't wanna forget to talk about that. That's why I made that the cover page. So the second page is our normal monthly of what the department's budget is, what they've paid out, what they have encumbered their balance, and what's left. Over. For anybody that doesn't know, we are closing off purchase orders, requisitions on the ninth of August.
Unless it's an emergency.
Unless it's an absolute dire emergency. I forgot, I didn't have time, is not going to be considered an emergency. That also goes for the use of the credit cards, so that we can balance them and teach everybody in the office how to do this. On August seventeenth, at nine o'clock in the morning, we'll be department head budget meeting with the city council in this room. It's a Saturday.
Nine AM?
Yes, or nine AM. I would like to make it three, but they won't.
PM?
Me and him will be the only two here at three AM in the morning.
Don't, don't listen to their noise, Sam. They're crazy.
So, just so you know, the departments have already been briefed. Entities will show up at one o'clock, and hopefully, we're done with the departments. So we will send an email out to the entities as well. But this is where we're at right now, as far as spending. And as a reminder, we did move the nuisance line from a hundred and sixty-six thousand from the other department to the police department, so their budget didn't increase.
And before, Mike brought that up, before I forget, when we address entities and things, it was brought up by several entities since past go around, that we worked our way down the list of entities, but by the time we got to the last two, three, four, or whatever it was, it was just fighting for scraps. So how do we prioritize that entity list in order to give them, if we're gonna give them more than their level funding?
I would not commit to funding everything until you heard, hear everybody plead their case.
And, and you know.
That goes for the departments as well. I would not say, yep, the police department can have five million and use it all, because when, as we go through this, you're gonna see it's not as good as you all think.
Yeah, and I think so too, because I think in the past budget meetings, we do get in a habit of promising things before we get through the budget. We just need to, we just need to go through it line by line.
Lee, what was your question?
Just confirming, nine AM on the seventeen.
Nine AM on the seventeen, yes. It's, it's Saturday.
Seventeen, I don't know why I thought it was the nineteen.
It's the Saturday, right, Lynn?
Yep.
Yeah.
Then, yes, Saturday, the seventeenth, yeah.
So it, doesn't that mean we're gonna have to have two budget meetings if we're not gonna confirm anything in the budget meeting? So will there have to be a budget meeting follow-up?
You can do it after you talked to, because you're gonna have to discuss it, I'm sure.
So are we gonna? So are we gonna, so in the budget, so what are you saying, after we talk to everybody, everybody's gonna leave, and then we're gonna finalize our budget?
No, you need to do it at that time. So you need to hear what everybody has to say before you start promising money, or do you wanna make sure?
No, we should say after they're all done talking, then we can stay and finalize.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, after everybody's left, then we, we stay and finalize.
Otherwise, the same thing's gonna happen this year, when certain entities get nothing, because we spent it all, or we're gonna have to renegotiate to take money from the police department like we did last year.
Okay, that makes sense, I, I think that's a good idea, I do think that's a good idea, that way, once everybody's left, then we can go ahead and finalize what we are and aren't gonna do. And hopefully too, I think it was like this the last couple of times, it can be what they got last year, what they're requesting, and so on and so forth, by line by line.
Does anyone need me to go over this page, which, where the departments are at, or you guys could get it? Lee, are you good?
Yeah, thank you.
Nope, not a problem.
Hey, I got, I have a question, I was looking at appropriation contracts, and I see safe hazard.
We haven't gotten there yet, sir.
Oh, I didn't know you was going, I thought you was done.
Nope, we haven't gotten there yet.
Alright, let's go.
Okay, so Melanie Salter, she's our consultant that we hired, she balanced two accounts, um, and worked with our auditor to make sure the journal entries were done. She's attended a meeting with Walter Lewis, um, and she's provided a lot of consulting to our department to help us.
So how, how is that going? Because I know we're in the middle of the bond, so, so how is this gonna provide information with the department being short-handed, and I know it's a lot in work, interim budgets.
Right, we had sent, um, Walter, uh, email, thinking that's what he wanted, um, it wasn't, so we've now asked him to provide us examples of what he's looking for, and as soon as we got the example, you know, Sandy, great, was able to go in and find what he wanted in, in just a few minutes.
So are we on schedule, or is, are things like that to bring us behind?
We're behind on providing the documentation, um, we're trying to figure out what is being asked of us. She'll be here tomorrow, and we're supposed to go through the list with her, she has the list, but we're gonna go through it with her.
Are we allowed to have her around more to catch up?
Um, the council approved her to work overtime, which was twenty hours.
Can we take it to twenty-five or thirty?
Ideally, I would like her to come more, um, and it will not affect her RSA at all.
What about your budget?
Um, the money's coming from unused salaries.
I know, but will, by having her more, will you be requesting additional money, or do you still have the money in your budget to have her more?
I don't have the money in my budget, it's in unused salaries.
Well, well, that's what I was, but they're unused salaries from your budget, from your department?
There is money in. Yes, yes. Yes, because we don't have an accounting manager, um, ten people took the test recently, and not one person passed.
But if we give her ten more hours or whatever, it can still come out of your unused salaries.
Yes, sir.
And that would help your department?
Yes, and then we could get her to focus on the things.
So tell me how we're gonna do it, so are, because I know she's working on some other stuff now, so are we gonna just use her, is she gonna prioritize the bond stuff, and the account?
Bond is in paper, it's a affiliation, yes. And she's got it up Sandy, um, because we don't have a true accountant in our office, she is.
And she won't even carry an overtime, right?
No, nope.
So how do you guys feel about, because I know we, we are in the middle of this, and.
And this is only through, this is only through September, sure.
That's what I was, um, thinking too, I don't, the authorization, it didn't specify a limit, it already did just say part-time, what did it say?
Lee kept asking if it was part-time or full-time, and I said part-time.
But the, but the, but we never.
Just said the hour wasn't right.
So, okay.
Just fifty dollars an hour.
I just didn't wanna go up without.
Yeah.
Because we've got unused.
As long as it's in there, then, yeah.
And you think this is gonna help us stay on track, or get us where we need to be, and stay on track, and we'll still be able to keep the bank, uh, accounts working out as well too, right?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with it, do you guys?
Yeah, I just wanna know, this is through September, correct?
Yes.
And we, we can't hire anybody anyway, ten people took the test and nobody passed, so we're still, as of right now, hopefully, as of right now, we're gonna be in the same predicament in October. So do we have any more questions on that, we're all in agreement, so?
I'm good.
Perfect, Lee, you're good. The next page. I don't think I've provided you guys the next page, I apologize. The sales tax running totals for the departments. Um, I didn't, I didn't print that one, I'm sorry. Um, currently, the fire department's in the hole, a hundred and ten, and the police department's eight grand in the hole. The police department will come out of the hole this month, and that was because of their trucks.
Where are we, what's our total number? So how far off are we from the four million?
Uh, you're at one million, nine thousand sixty-nine dollars, four hundred twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents.
So there's only been two hundred thousand, right about two hundred extra thousand, just from the last update? Because we were at one point seven.
Yeah, one point five percent's not much.
Okay. Is there a, um, also, Alex, would there be a, um, I don't know, let me look before I ask, so I was gonna ask, is there gonna be a list of all the accounts? With the total, with the total in all the accounts, especially since we raised the sales tag?
There's not, or you mean for the departments, yes.
No, not for the departments, like for the, the general account, the gas tax account, stuff like that, like all the accounts, like, is, would there be a report with the running balance of all the accounts? So we get like.
I'd answer for the budget.
Yeah, I could tell you how much money's in each account, um, but that sales tax, the first four million is taken away anyway. First four million goes to.
We're not gonna get any extra in the general budget.
No, no.
Not until after the first.
Actually, we're gonna lose, because we have to take in the pay point.
Yes, speaking of that, so if we go to the next page, which says information only, salary fringe, we're providing an update now, so you guys see where the city's about to be when we do budgets, just so that nobody's surprised. So in FY twenty-four, the department's pay plan was seven point six million, next year is gonna go up to eight point eight million, because we agreed that the departments, i.e. street shop, or street police and fire, um, would take it out of their budget as we did for parking wreck. Now we will end up assuming all of this for all the departments.
So payroll can be eight million dollars?
Eighty point eighty million.
But that's not even including the, um, the payroll for the, um, the library and parking wreck, because we can't classify, so that's not even, we can't classify, their money's just in their budget.
It'll tell us how much it is, and that's what we agreed. Um, so you see that in front of you, we broke it up by department, so you can see. Uh, the next page is what the departments at this time, minus parking wreck and library museum, what the departments are asking for.
And this is. I got a, I got a question, um, when you do the budget this time, on each line item, if there is an increase, can you make it red, that entire line?
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll make it a color, but not red.
Well, what?
That's a very hostile color.
What? Yeah, still make it red. But just make it so that way, there can be an explanation, and I'm not saying, you know, I know I probably already sound a little aggressive, but I'm not saying, no, you're not gonna get it, we just wanna make sure, when we go line by line, they're able to verify, you know, or these increases, they're able to explain the increases, if that makes sense.
Correct, there's one department that still hasn't turned in a budget, he's waiting on quotes, but we're supposed to have his budget tomorrow with quotes, and he's supposed to come and speak to us.
Another question, how much of this percentage is salaries? In these, um, in these increases? What percentage of these is salaries, because we all knew salaries went up.
Salaries and benefits.
Yeah, salaries and benefits, because we don't wanna be overwhelmed by this number, and we already knew that this was gonna go up, if that makes sense.
We can provide you percentages for salaries.
Yeah, because this includes salaries.
Like I want to, maybe an increase in, uh.
Yeah, but see, but see, on each line item, it's like.
See how much of that percentage is salaries?
Yeah, some, some of this is salaries and, and benefits.
Yep.
So that makes it better, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're on the, the page that says FY twenty-four with amendments?
Yes, on this page, that's the page I'm looking at, so yeah, so make sure you put, um.
What percentage of that percentage is salaries?
Is salaries and benefits.
Okay.
Because this is in a total budget increase.
Okay, we can do that, that makes sense. So now we're on the, the sheet still that says FY twenty-four with amendments, FY twenty-five requested, the departments, so the departments alone are, last year asked for fifteen point four billion, several departments, with the exception of two, have gone up, and now we're looking at seventeen point one million for the departments alone.
Just make sure, um, just make sure when we're reaching out to the department heads, entities, and so on and so forth, that they're able to explain.
Very detailed.
Yeah.
We have advised them in our meetings, we got five meetings tomorrow.
Okay.
Yes, um, the next page is non-department expenses, these are expenses that we automatically budget for, um, art, flagpole, things that we spend routinely every year, and we did do a three-year average, and you'll notice some of those went up as well. So, we're going from two thirty-five all the way up to two seventy-six.
And just make sure these are defined as well, just.
Percentages, yes, ma'am.
And then we just make sure we're being consistent, and everybody has to explain.
Right, then we have appropriation in contracts, what they received in FY twenty-four, and what they're asking for in FY twenty-four, some went up to.
I got a, I got a question on some of these too, because I remember in the last budget, some of these were one-time costs, I wanna know if they're one-time costs, or if they're gonna be recurrent costs.
Yes.
Because to me, that, that does make a difference. Because we don't wanna count it, I mean, we still have to count it in the fiscal year twenty-five, but it may not, it may not apply to twenty-six, if that makes sense.
Yes, um, and we did add a new one on here, which we will just be discussing with the police department at the next council meeting, um, Palmer Place, but again, that will be done at the next council meeting, and then that'll be an annual request as well, that's my understanding.
Do we have one of these in somewhere there?
It's intelligen.
Yeah, I know, but I didn't think it was one, I, because I, I know what this is, that's, that's why I asked, okay.
It's for the children, it is.
Yeah, I know what it is, but I, I didn't know, maybe we would get any one, if they were gonna put a location here.
It's just, it's intelligen.
Okay.
But we go there.
Okay.
If you look at the last page, this is the page we need to focus on. It breaks down the warrants, um, for what the council may or may not propose, we have it broken down by thirty, thirty-five, and forty million, what our potential payback is. So for FY twenty-five, we did our projected revenues as twenty-two million and change. Then the current bond payment for two thousand seventeen AMV, we did not include the school, because he's assured me that he's gonna pay his debt, um, and he, and he's very good about paying his bills. Um, we're estimating the twenty twenty-four bond, um, because if we give away all the money, and we have an estimated and a bond payment comes due, we won't have to take it.
Let me ask a, a question, so, and Walter's here too, did we anticipate having this done before, so what?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna do it in August, nope.
Make it mine, I asked my own question.
So, um, and that doesn't include the insurance increases for this facility either. Um, we put in the departments, the non-departments, and the appropriations, and you'll notice that there's a significant deficit, we highlighted it in red for you. So, um, and that's on that last page.
Guys, we got a lot of work, we got, we got to train some stuff down.
Let me ask you, so, yeah, this is, oh, so this is the deficit.
Mm-hmm.
She's on this page?
Yeah, I'm looking at it, so, this is a, this is a projected deficit, is what you're saying.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
But everybody's. That doesn't include the requested capital you guys want, that we're supposed to be discussing as well, to put aside for capital projects. So, um, one last thing, I just wanna give you an update on the museum.
Oh, it's just coming to flood now?
Yeah, it, uh, rained today, and they have water pouring in the building, um, the contractors are out there, and they seem to have fixed it, um, temporarily, so it should be done before school starts, if I'm not mistaken, right, Tom? So, and the school's gonna be able to help, helping us to make sure that people can sleep over there, so we have more capable. Is there any questions?
Thank you for preparing that baseline, so we're not, like you said, sticker shocking all this.
Yeah.
If anybody has a suggestion, that'd be great.
Daniel would hate it.
Well, the, the, the hard part now is on the council to, well, the ma, the mayor will present a balanced budget, and if we, if it's balanced, then that's what we need to go with, because apparently we're a little short on money, and we just do the best we can when we move.
We sure will.
Yeah, I mean, we're getting more money, but everybody wants more.
Expenses are more, increasing more than the money we're getting more.
And we're already in the hole too, that's the thing.
Mayor, you, you will present the same budget you presented last year, where everything's balanced?
Absolutely not, with the can, economy and inflation, everything, naturally it's going to fall.
Okay, but it, but you'll have the numbers, you and your office will have the numbers where they need them.
We see the value right there.
Okay.
What we're working on now is the departments, what they need to carry through twenty twenty-five, what you're looking at is their benefits and salaries and all that, that's go on top of that.
Yes.
Okay, alright, any more questions as far as the, um, the work session? Alright, we're gonna take a quick bathroom break, um, five minutes, so everybody can stand up, stretch your legs, and, um.